Well, I want to talk about the tree city. I put out an application that's going to be to submit plans for being a tree city. We had to have a ordinance, but I just sent a sample ordinance and Judy supposed to email you guys the popular, the sample ordinance that was, that we sent in and they said we can change that once you guys come up with whatever you want to it, whatever how the ordinance we took it. A pilot to the lady in Scottsboro and she had, Scottsboro's been tree city since, not the end of four, within a tree city for 29 years. And she said some of the stuff in that ordinance that she said that we might want to take out. So I did take some of the stuff that she suggested out. Some of the stuff was like, my boardroom brought me back that tree and I boardroom said, Roger, if you got something on that tree and pick up something on that tree we find it. She said that she didn't believe that that was good to, to tell people what to do on private property. But you know, far as the city, you know, we would have to, once we do that, we'll have to do Arbor Day, we got to plant some trees, then we would have to do education, like I guess if we had an Arbor Day, you know, we could pass out pamphlets, tell people how to prune trees. There's a lot of, you know, they said benefits to being a tree city. It says it reduces costs, you know, if you have the trees and stuff around to people's houses and things. And Joey said that we're going to have a tree, he donated to plant, he's ready to go. Estipation of the lady said we had to have a whole digger and so I had to sit around and to me, I hold it.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
But no, analogy aside, it wasn't. We had to come up with some stuff and do that and by the way that it, that it happened, we had to do all this stuff and it was too late today, y'all had that council meeting for us to get it all done. Y'all can change anything. We went in and, and put some, my people on the committee, we had to do that. But you guys can put whoever you want to on the committee and change it. We just had to do that for the application that they submitted. And then I guess we'll hear back if we're selected. And then if there's anything that y'all want to change or when you do the ordinance, then we have to send the ordinance, the one that y'all approve or fix. And then we'll send the committee, the y'all approving fix to them. Debbie, she helped me with that, so she's got the password and stuff how to get into the site. So we loaded it up and sent it out. And all, she said that all the council is supposed to be considered part of the board and you have to have five other people, I think it is, on the board and the matter in council. So y'all just, whenever y'all get that done, whatever y'all will bid in, you know, we've got the stuff to submit it.
When do you think we'll hear back to see if we're selected?
I don't know. They didn't say, and I've been trying to get in touch with the guy at the state if they had a change, changing of the guard. And I hadn't been able to get ahold of our representative. Now Clifford Hawkins was the representative and he moved to further south and he's in Mobile, but he said that he would help. The lady and I, I can't remember her name right now, she said, I've got to find them and stuff at my office, but she said that at Scottsboro that she would help us do anything, you know, we needed to do. There are several communities in the state that have been, Foley has been a tree city for 33 years. They have been the longest. Mobile, Birmingham, Hoover, there's a lot of large cities that are tree cities. And so we're supposed to get a sign, let it, if you get approved, you get a sign, you know, get you can put around the welcome sign when you come in. She said that every year you have to reapply to be a tree city. You have to have a plan and do everything every year to be, to be a tree too. So it's an ongoing process once this happens. And then if you don't sort it, fill out the application, then you no longer are a tree city.
What's the other small town you were telling me that's a tree city?
Valley Head.
Valley Head.
She said that Valley Head became one last year. And she said that we might want to talk to them because she said their ordinance might be newer than Scottsboro's, which I did get Scottsboro's ordinance, the lady sent it to me and they had several revisions, but it had a lot of the stuff that the lady that's on the board said that they really, and they don't really do nothing with it, I guess anyway, that she was saying that she didn't think that we should go and put all that, but she said we may can talk to Valley Head. But when I was telling David, you know, since Scottsboro has been a tree city for so long, you know, we might want to talk to them or Valley Head, both to see if they can have, ours was also a tree city, they've been one for, I can't remember how many years. There's several communities and Boaz is the other nearest community to us other than Valley Head and Scottsboro. So when we hear back, then if you, you guys can do whatever y'all want to do, how you want to fix it. And like I said, I gave Debbie the information of how to get into the website. And the sample ordinance is also on their website if you want to go look at it and see some of the stuff that we kind of took out, you know, like finding people and stuff like that. So you can go and y'all can look over it. What about that? Then on the welcome sign, I said, the one that's, the one I took down, I've got a meeting with Mark Maranheim, the opposing wing state, to see about how we can, I drew the picture and the picture that I drew was like the picture that I drew for the, the welcome sign. He said that if he sent that to the state, it would weather mine because he's never had a picture that was so detailed and done that. So we're going to have to do something different. So he's going to make with him to go down that road, fill out the application to go to see if we can get that in. He said that don't expect that to happen overnight. So the, I don't know if any of y'all have noticed, the welcome sign is coming in from Sylvania is, looks very bad. I mean, it looks worse than bad. So I'm here tonight to ask if we can replace, I would like to replace all three, all the existing signs. We have the money in our account to replace two, two signs. And if the one that y'all approved for at the top of the mountain, if we could use that to replace one of the existing signs, then when that gets through, we actually in our account, we could, we could do two and a half signs and not have no money in our account. So I'm saying that if you would let us use the money that you approved for the one at the top of the mountain to replace the three that we have, then I think how maybe that gets to the state, maybe we will have enough money in our account to purchase the other, the other sign. And the, I've talked to the civic organizations, I talked to the Masons, the civitans and the Lions Club. The Masons are going to take the signs, if y'all approve that tonight, they're going to take those signs off, they're going to redo them, they're going to repaint them or have them redone. Civitan close to the same and so is Lions Club. And then I had talked to Roland today at Mall Market about fixing us a pole that's the same, made of the same material as our welcome sign. And they would put them down vertically and make it a pole and not put it on the sign, but put it off to the side on the welcome sign. And the cost for the pole and the cap, he said he would put a decorative cap on it and installation on that would be $150 per pole.
So basically what we're asking for is to go ahead and purchase three, the three that are currently standing, replace them. And then when the other gets through the state, we should have money in our account, hopefully to pay for that or at least go all the way for it.
Right, yes. Because we, I mean, if we, we would, we have $9,845.5 in our account and those signs are $3,950. So we would have $1,940 left in the account. That says as the end of December. And so then, and I checked with Debbie today, all of her bills, apart from, you know, having paid of what we have purchased, stuff in December. So, you know, if we can do that, I think that, that would be especially the one at Sylvania, I'm going to hit somebody.
Well, I'll let them look.
Oh, but yeah, but Sylvania's really bad because it's faded and it would be a long way, I mean, if y'all would, you know, if we could do that, then we could get that started and get the Sylvania sign replaced first. And then we'll have him working on all of those and then get the sign. And then we would have, you know, Mark said that it could take up to six months or longer. So then by that time, you know, we should, with the money in our account, we should, we should have enough then to be able to, to purchase the sign that y'all didn't approve for the top of the mountain because it could take longer.
Currently, we're, we're giving the beautification committee $500 a month?
Correct.
Okay. And that's where the $9,000 has derived from?
Yes. Well, we raised money, some of that money was, we raised from the clock. So we haven't really spent but $1,000 of the city's money since y'all have been giving us the money. We have used some of the money that we had raised and so we have, because y'all have been giving us the money for about two years. So I think that we have been, you know, sparing and saving with our money so that we thought that this would be a good thing and it would be a beautification for the entrance of Sylvania. Especially the one, you know, at Sylvania, it needs to be the first. And all the civic organizations want their signs to look as, they said they want something new. I talked to all of them. So they're, and they're, depending on what you said, they all come to the column tomorrow and if they already going to go, go ahead and start taking them off and start working on them to, to make them look nice, but put on the sign. The pole will, he's going to do a 10 foot pole so that then we can put it in the ground, two feet or three feet, get it to the ground. But I think those signs looking at those, it was very much time, but I had a lot of time to do that. And I think that we can put them down there vertically, you know, even where they look. I think the Mason's sign is the largest sign. It looks like it's maybe, I don't know, a little over 18 inches, maybe around that.
I'll make that in a motion tonight for us to do that.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I follow up with that just a minute? When she brought up the tree thing, do you want us, are you requesting us to go ahead and pursue an ordinance, Kay? Or do you want us to wait to see if we're actually approved?
We, we need to have the, we need to send the ordinance that we want in there, the way, I mean, that we need to have. She said that, she said that if I sent that sample ordinance in, I told her that the first council meeting would be tonight and she said, well, then if you can get it to us as quickly as you can, is what she told me after we did the.
Okay.
But I think, in other words, maybe that's just a formality, like we are going to be accepted, I mean, you know, I don't know that, but she did say that as quickly, whenever you guys got that done, that we could resubmit all that information.
Is there a, I don't, I meant to ask you this, is there a cost to being a tree city or is it just recognition and what helps us get trees from the Arbor Foundation?
Well, we filled out, you had, so that's why I never brought it to you because I thought it's supposed to cost.
Nice.
Well, I found out that we already, we already did that with.
It's $2 per capita, the pleasure. Let you use cost associated with clearing roads, clipping lanes.
If we get Joey's, we won't do it.
Equipment, salaries and all that, so we can do past $10,000 a year.
Debbie helped me with those, because we filled that part of it out.
Okay. I will get with Ms. Deborah, the city clerk at Valley Head tomorrow and get a copy of their ordinance.
Okay.
And we can, we can use that as a guideline.
Well, I, like I said, I forgot the ordinance at Scottsboro, but the lady, it's, I saw on their board suggested that we not really use it because she said that I, it's got.
Who's David?
Yeah, she says David, it's got three revisions, but then it's got a lot of that stuff that she was saying that she didn't believe that we should go and take this private property until they're not updated.
Yeah, I think it's the positive thing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Kay.
I got one question while we're still on this topic. Do we want to, to help out any, any additional funds to the account so that the beautification committee does not, you know, drain its, its funds with this project?
Well, if they're going to do two, if we're going to do one, then I think it would be good unless they come up with something else that you two want.
You talking about monthly contribution?
Well, no, just a one-time infusion of cash. The, the signs are $3,000 apiece.
$3,950. So we would have $1,940 left in our account if we purchased these two out of our account. And then the one that y'all have already approved, then all we're going to have to do is, is when, when, if we can get that one through the state, then we will have to have money when that happens to put that.
Okay. When that, that fourth one comes to you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we may have, I mean, we may fall short, who knows when it will come to you. But you know, the only other thing that we might need, we won't probably be doing them more money until the spring, you know, maybe when we did flowers, maybe to fill the dreams again or, you know, or something like that that we planted and done, we wouldn't need, you know, but we tried to save our money for this, we've been thinking about this project, but I just didn't realize how bad that sign looked till other day and Ricky Dawkins was talking about it. So we really, you know, if we can get that done, that we need to do that. And then we'll, we can move that signs and take down some of the, you know, there's not any landscaping stuff there except this one that's the sound. I think it's got a crepe marble too. We may try to replant those or move those because none of the other signs have any landscaping structure or stuff.
I personally like the idea or the concept of all four of the welcomed arrangement signs being uniform. So if we're going to change one, I like the idea of us going ahead and doing all, all four of them.
Well, yeah, the fourth one may be on down the road, it just depends how we can get this state, you know, and he said that that could take a little while, you know.
Before we get into the business tonight, I want to congratulate Councilman Lingerfeld on his recent honor. That's quite a, quite an accomplishment. That's a long list of well followed, rightful people and well deserved.
Thank you, sir.
I was really surprised with it and I really appreciate, you know, the support that I've got and the things that I've done in the years. I, you know, it, people has really helped me down through the years doing things in town and as I was a kid growing up or whatever and, and I feel like that's, that's kind of what I like to do is, is put back into my community. And so I enjoy doing the kind of stuff that I do, yeah. I appreciate it.
I just got an announcement. February 5th is the second community-wide meeting, it's the second phase of ACE. It's what they'll call a strategic planning community meeting. And don't have a place secured yet, but that's when they can come. I know last time we done it in, in Broadway and that worked out really good. Maybe have more, maybe get that sorted out this week and I'll leave nobody. That's all I got.
I got a few announcements to make. One, I'd like to give a little pat on the back to Ms. Carol Lee Foreman. She had secured the Rainsville Historical Preservation Committee a, a non-matching grant of $2,500. We're going to use that to renovate a new municipal meeting room that we'll be meeting in in the near future. So I'd like to thank her for that. Remind everybody this week, you, Friday and Saturday night, we will be having, well, not we, AgriCenter will be hosting the first ever PBR bull riding event here. So that's sort of a big deal for this facility. I hope everybody attends and.
Advanced tickets on sale here.
That's correct. You can see, Mr. Mike, he'll be glad to sell it. Wanted a quick update. Last time we had spoke about the issuance or re-issuance of municipal bonds and taking advantage of the low interest rates while they exist. Mayor, you said you were going to shop the rates around a little bit and had we had any luck in that? Has it been?
We haven't done any shopping because we don't know how much we're going to borrow. We need a, you know, we need a list of things that we want to read about. If we want, we need money, we need to know what is for and how much. They're going to have to know if they can quote rates, they're going to have to know the dollar amount. So we just have a list of priorities and we need to, I mean, compile them and, and go from there.
Do we need to have a workshop to, to take care of this?
I think, I think that'd be great. It's a pretty big, it's a pretty big undertaking, quite a bit of money to borrow. So, yeah, I think, I think a workshop would be great.
We can set a date on it and then just keep getting work on.
Monday nights usually would be good for a lot.
I can be here next Monday night, is, is that doable for everyone else?
Where is that now?
Five o'clock. Okay. We'll have a workshop set for then. I'm going to be asking us to pay the $6,775 that covers 100 new garbage cans and 20 new eight yard lids. We were down to four garbage cans and we had to order some more. So that bill came in, I'll be asking for that payment tonight. I also have down here the top dresser agreement. I, I know you and Ms. Barstool had met and came up with some revisions. Where, where are we standing on that now?
Well, you know, Ms. Barstool took a job in Birmingham and the day I got it from Broner, I went over that day and we sat down and talked, but we had some reservations about, we both had some reservations about what was in that agreement. It hadn't went any further because I, I guess I just assumed it probably needed to be worked out with whoever her successor will be.
And they said time table might be.
There's rules about posting and then time has the pass or something, is that right?
Yeah. They haven't been posted, I don't think it has.
As of today, it still is not posted.
I talked to her about that after you, that day and she, me and her talked about it and I went back over, because I didn't get to read it before, I just gave it to you that morning, I didn't even have a chance to read it. And I found two paragraphs in there that I didn't like either.
Yeah.
So I guess what she was talking about.
Yeah, we were just worried about the commitment because what it had in there was if a, if the school was having an event on city property, the school would have need a representative present at the city, I'd have a man at the school. And I said, that's really complicated and probably just some overkill.
It was, it was overkill, definitely.
So that's, that's where that stands. The rest of it, she didn't say a problem with it and I didn't say a problem with it.
So basically we need to get principal, probably, before we can go any further.
On the agreement, yes.
Yeah, I would just say.
And just one other update. At our last meeting, we talked about proposing, we were applying for grants for rental field projects and it was, it had us, it was seconded with, with conditions. Just wanted to update on what the status of that is.
The status of the grant that we were going to submit? We did not submit it.
Okay. So that's, that's all I have for this meeting.
We had a, well, first of all, I want to thank Alan for giving us the report on the wastewater treatment plant. You all received that and I appreciate, as someone mentioned as well, it's always very timely and we do appreciate that very much. We had a dump truck that we had to get repaired and they kept it for quite some time. They didn't charge us any labor, but just charged us the parts. And that came to $1,396.74 and I'm going to ask that you approve that expenditure to repair the dump truck. And also, we have Alan's truck that's at the same shop getting repaired and we're in the neighborhood of $700. And I'm going to ask for approval to pay that expenditure as well with a cap of $1,000 and less. If it goes over that, I'll bring it back again to you. But I'm going to ask for those two expenditures to be approved. That's all I'm going to ask for, except I would like to, since I missed the last meeting due to an accident on my daughter, tell, can you tell me from the minutes a little bit what the discussion was about time clocks? Because I know we had mentioned it before and I'm just wanting to make sure I understand where, where we're going.
I had asked, yeah, there wasn't really, I had asked Debbie and Judy to put this in our folder and we need to start working on it. It's all employees and Roger had mentioned planning time clocks and every, well, everybody's going to be clocking in except salaried employees and then the city treasurer, of course, and we need it for our records too. It needs to be clarified who falls under the salaried employee and exempt and non-exempt.
Okay. So this is going to be, our time clocks are going to be effective soon or?
Well, after we get, after we got to digging into it, we're, we're a little bit fobbing because we're going to have to make sure that we got everybody, everybody's on them, either their own salary or their own hourly. So we got to make sure all of that's right first, you know, before we can, before we can go forward with that.
Can that also be included in the work session next Monday night so we can progress with that?
I think we have time. And maybe rather.
I don't think it would, I don't think it would take long.
No, I don't think so.
I like the idea of a time clock and I think that's something that we should have been doing a long time, but I just wondered what the discussion was.
That's, it was just brought up to, just to kind of get it out that we were looking into it to see what we needed to do and then, and then figure out who all needs to be on salary and who needs to be on hourly. That's basically what it was for, just to kind of get started.
And the other thing, going back to what I mentioned to start with about records, as I said, Alan is very prompt in giving us a report each month. Usually I get those from the police department in, in an email form. I don't remember if I got it for this month, being a little bit under the weather. I don't recall seeing one of those from the fire department in some time. Who do we need to address that to? I mean, well, I haven't received, have you received anything from them?
I'll have to check my email.
If you've received it, I'd, I'd like for it to be forwarded to us and if that's not been done, I'd like to know why and if we could get that started again.
I don't think we've received one in probably five to six months.
From the fire department?
Four to five months, it might not quite be up to six months mark, but it's, it's been a long time.
Yes, sir.
Way on the reports, I did just send mine right before I left for, Johnny had been doing it, but there was some issue about November. Man, I'm sitting down, we're going through that, but you got two months this time.
Okay.
So you have it on your.
Well, I knew, I usually got an email from you or something.
So you have it now.
Okay. All right. And that's all that I have. Just a little.
I'll ask Thomas and.
And you know, there could be, could be a glitch in sending it out, but you know, we could have the, it's nice to look over to see what's been done.
And it's.
I don't have anything.
All I have is I'm going to be making a motion for Kay to purchase one of the Rainsville signs and that beautification we've entered.
I don't, I don't really have anything to spend any money on. If anybody wants to see, this is the drawings of the, of the building that we've been talking about and doing some remodeling on. So if y'all remember that after, after the meeting or whatever, just some drawings on it, just to kind of give us a update. Just been up to date on the ball field that we've been working on for a while. Been a good bit of work going on on it, even despite the weather. People's been up there doing some, some different kind of work on it, so it's coming along. Hopefully we'll be ready by, by August, which is not very long. So I'd like to thank some of the city workers for going down to the library and doing some work down there. They pulled out a bunch of old shrubs and stuff and cleaned up around the library and the, the garden club. I've been talking to Ms. Linda Stevens and she is fixing to start the shrubbery back around the library and so that should be coming along here pretty, pretty quick. So we get some basic weather work going on. All that's coming around. Sir, you got anything?
We need to throw a thank you to Sammy and the city workers too, because they were able to take that building down that we was replacing, ball fields, to save us, to get a bit of money since we don't have people able to do that.
You ended up by there.
It's working on the look.
It's coming around good, the field is, it looks good.
And you might want to say, I had lots of compliments on the Christmas lights.
And you might want to say, um, I had lots of compliments on the Christmas lights. So I know you were in, a major, uh, influence behind that and now you're a new proud grandpapa. You got pictures?
That's on the phone.
Congratulations and thank you.
It's Wendy's gonna start some kind of valet parking because you haven't been able to get that place.
It's covered up.
That's just fine.
Part of it, the way we signed, it's stacked up over there and outside and playing, but.
And the fans. Yeah.
A lot of it, they have to be reused on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Future building.
So the patio just left.
You know. Well, actually, it wasn't really.
Oh.
They wouldn't really.
They took it up. It was, it wasn't worth trying to save.
Okay.
We have a, when signups gonna start?
Uh, the last two Saturdays in January, January the twenty-fourth and thirty-first on Tuesday at the Field of Dreams.
And what's the age? It's five and a half?
Five and a half. No, four and a half last year.
Eight.
They wanted to try to have a six-year-old softball this year, six-and-under softball, if, if it's enough in the local area to play.
Time for the meeting. The meeting will come to order. Graham?
Present.
Holt here, Ledbetter?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Linka?
Here.
Y'all looked over the minutes from the highest meeting.
Al, I'd like to move that we dispense of the reading of the minutes and accept the last presentation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Freeman to dispense with the reading of the minutes and passes presented, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to say aye. Yeah, you said maybe, no, I don't think.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. You gonna say aye.
You didn't even vote.
No, I wouldn't. Hey, say aye for her.
I don't have anything.
Um, I move that we, uh, purchase a hundred toter cans and twenty eight-yard lids for the dumpsters for a combined amount of six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. My second.
Motion by Graham and second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all that I have?
So that, we can just have a meeting or just announce it?
Is that an announcement or is it?
Okay.
Um, before I make my motion, do we have to, um, make anything about the resolution for the tree city or just start working on that?
I think you start working on it.
Okay.
We need to get the draft in.
Okay. I make a motion that we pay Lance Kittle Repair in Henneger, uh, for the repair of the dump truck, one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
My second.
Motion by Holt, second. Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay for the repair to, um, Alan's truck, the same shop, Lance Kittle Repair. And currently the bill is at seven hundred, but I'm gonna make a cap of a thousand. And then if it goes over that, I'll bring that bill back for approval. So up to a thousand dollars to repair this truck.
My second.
Motion by Holt, second by Linger, or second by Ledbetter.
That's a way.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'm gonna let Brandon bring up the, uh, new sign motion.
Nothing.
I'm gonna make a motion that we purchase one of the signs and let the beautification board do the other two.
Also.
Thirty-nine hundred and eighty-five.
Three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then, oh.
And a pole.
And a pole.
Yeah.
My second.
And motion by Freeman, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, I don't have any plans for any more now.
I move that we pay the monthly bills as presented by the tree.
I second it.
Motion by Graham to pay the monthly bills, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have a business.
How much of a motion will you adjourn?
Second, motion by Ledbetter to adjourn the meeting, second, uh, Linka, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.